Okay fabulous, well thank you everyone. I hope that the weather is lovely where you are. Today it's raining here, but I guess April showers bring May flowers, right? Well, today we're delving into another chapter of our series on generations. And we're talking about how to make differences work within the workplace. And you know, just to give you something to think about, you know, think about as you go through this call and even after this call, what are some of the generational differences you've observed in your organization? And why do you think those differences exist? And hopefully today I'll be able to answer a couple of those questions, but you need to be thinking about that for yourselves too, because each workplace is a little bit unique. You know, when we start to get all these different generations in the workplace and because there's been so much change in the past few decades, we get a lot of different opinions. And people who've been in the workplace for a long time feel that younger people have no work ethic. And the younger people say, you know, "I'm sick of hearing that you did it this way. Let's try something new." And we have these areas of conflict. And I'm curious to know, I'm going to, I'd like to launch a poll. And let's see how this works. So, the question is, "How often are you observing some of these generation gaps in the workplace?" You know, are you often seeing it, sometimes, rarely, or never? And if you click into your poll. But you know, generational conflict can be anything from just, you know, gaps literally leading to conflict, but it can also be people saying, "Oh my gosh, I'm so frustrated. I don't understand those younger people," or "I don't understand my boss." So, I'll give you just a couple more seconds and we'll make sure you vote. All right, excellent. So, it looks like we have 60% of you are saying that sometimes you're experiencing some sort of generational conflict in the workplace. 30% of you are experiencing it often, which, you know, so that's a big red flag that something's going on. And 10% rarely. No one said never, so I guess that's why we're on this, this call today, right? So, it's kind of, it's a little bit like Spy vs. Spy, if you remember that comic. Here's what we want to avoid is kind of that sabotaging, that undercurrent of negativity. We've got to try to appreciate the different generations and the skillsets that they bring to their table and build on teamwork and collaboration. And quite frankly, that's easier said than done. And that's why we have these generation gaps occurring. But just to briefly recap, you know, on our first conversation that we had, our first presentation, we talked just briefly about each of the primary generations in the workforce. And you know, Baby Boomers, 1946 to 1964, they are the majority of the workforce and have been for several decades now. And when we look at what shapes a generation, we're really kind of looking at some of the key factors, some of the key influences going on during childhood and adolescence. So, we know that Baby Boomers kind of value that idea of following a certain career path, staying in a job or a career, being loyal to your country and to your family. But then along came Generation X and the influences were quite different. We started to see divorce, we started to see latchkey children, children kind of raising themselves. Mom and dad weren't home. There was customization, globalization. We started to see, you know, mergers, layoffs, downsizing, so no job security. And then Generation Y came along and that's, you know, also known as the Millennials, but they too have had some very different influences, a lot of violence, close to home, helicopter parenting technology, being always rewarded for participation, not achievement, seeing the nation's leaders lie and fail to deliver on their promises. So, again, when we look at all three of those generations, we can quickly understand why there are gaps, because there are very different things going on. And there's been a tremendous volume of change in a fairly short period of time. There's actually been more change than at any other time in history in just the past few decades. So, in a way, it's really kind of exciting, because we're living through a really thrilling time. But on the other hand, we're having to create the wheel, because everything that we've done in the workplace and everything that we've been ingrained to believe, it's all kind of being thrown onto its side. And again, that's why we're seeing a lot of conflict in the workplace, more so than ever before. Now, I think it's, I really think it's interesting to focus kind of on the core areas, these four areas on the slide, of where generational conflict usually occurs. And there's been lots of studies done on this and it's been broken down to these four key areas. And so, I'm going to spend just a couple minutes here, but choosing where and when to work. If you listen to the language of the people in your workforce, you will know that many of the Baby Boomers or your older colleagues are going to speak of going to work. And members of older generations often view work as a place. It's somewhere you go to, it's an office, it's a location. You go at a specified time, whether it's 8:30 to 5:00 or whatever the time may be. And it's kind of, you know, that's kind of spawned out of this whole manufacturing area, the industrial area. But over time, you know, the nature of work starts, has changed considerably. We've moved into a knowledge economy. But some of the most senior executives still are very used to that synchronous behavior. You report in, you go to a certain place at a certain time. And younger workers, in contrast, have never really viewed work as a place or a time. They tend to view work as something you can do anywhere, anytime. And they have grown up in a very opposite world, an asochronist world. So, you know, when you think about watching TV, well, you can now record your favorite programs and watch them at any time. You don't have to actually sit down at the designated time. They've really never known a world set by clocks and set by locations. So, it's very easy in the workplace for team members to misinterpret behaviors or expectations around time and place. So, you need to kind of think about in your workplace, okay, is someone who arrives at 9:30 working less than someone who arrives at 8:30? Or is it okay for someone to work from a different location? Is it absolutely imperative that time and place norms are important to, for our team to accomplish our tasks? What are we willing to compromise? Those are things to think about. The second area of conflict is communication among team members. And here again, it's kind of what you're used to, right? So, it's no surprise that many Gen Ys and Gen Xers are comfortable using electronic communication, especially Generation Y. That's their first level of comfort is texting, tweeting, and posting on social networking sites. They tend to do those things more than Baby Boomers do. But it's not so much the technology per se and the use of technology. It's really conflict kind of occurs depending on how the team members interpret how the technology is being used. So, for example, younger people are going to expect a very rapid response from their peers and anyone they're working with. And they're going to feel frustrated or rejected if they don't hear from their peers almost immediately, or at least within the day. But team members from older generations may not be very comfortable using that digital communication and might even feel offended by a lack of face-to-face contact, or at least voice-to-voice interaction, and then they feel left out of the loop. And it's very interesting, I've just recently wrapped up a project with Generation Y where I surveyed and interviewed numerous Gen Ys. And it's very common that they don't really like to meet face-to-face. They actually say, "We don't want to talk." And of course, Baby Boomers and Gen Xers, they don't quite comprehend that. They want to talk, they want to have meetings. So, the third area is getting together. And this kind of coincides with choosing when and where to work. But Boomers and Xers have grown up in a workplace accustomed to planning and scheduling. They are planners and schedulers themselves. But Generation Y tends to be coordinators. So, when faced with a need to meet up, Gen Ys are likely to think about, you know, honing in on immediate coordinates, whereas older colleagues would prefer to rely on pre-planned schedules. They're not going to fly by the seat of their pants. They may be very annoyed by that approach when Generation Y suggests, "Well, let's just do this." No, there's a process to everything. We have to plan things out, and that creates a lot of conflict. And to Generation Y, the youngest, when there's excessive scheduling that goes on and on, or excessive meetings in the workplaces, they tend to get very frustrated. They think it's very inefficient use of time and a waste of time in the workplace. And the fourth area, finding information or learning new things. So, you know, Boomers and the generation that came before them, the silent generation or traditionalists, they tend to be very linear learners. They're inclined to attend classes, read manuals, absorb information before they will begin a task. But Generation Y are very much on-demand learners. So, they figure things out as they go. They reach out to their personal contacts with, you know, asking for information or referrals. And they're likely to be bored or turned off by a project that begins with a lengthy training phase. I was meeting with a company a couple years ago. It's actually a very well-known restaurant chain. But they were saying, "We're having such a difficult time engaging these younger generations." And when I delved into it further with them, well, they had a three-year training process. Three years! And that's just entirely too long. Younger generations are going to understand that. So, you've got to decide as a team, which norms are going to work best for your team? How flexible you're going to be about time and place? How you're going to communicate different types of information? How scheduled you need to be, and so on? And it's really important to try to get the input of the different generations that you're working with. Let's take a quick poll. I'm curious to know, how much time does your company spend on kind of teamwork and team building? Are you doing that weekly, monthly, yearly, or never? So, thinking about teamwork and collaboration. So, if you take a moment, do the poll on your screen. And one moment here and we'll see the results. Okay, so it looks like 54% of the audience is monthly, doing something affiliated with team building. 17% of you are doing something weekly, that's really great. 25% yearly, that, you know, that's not enough. We'll get into that in just a moment. And then 4% of you said never. So, you have some homework to do to start thinking about teamwork and collaboration. All right, so let's talk for just a moment, oh here, I'll share the results. So, let's talk for just a moment on why different generations decide to join you. You will find that while there are differences and we're kind of focusing on some of those differences, there's also some similarities between generations. You know, regardless of generation, everybody decides to join an employer because they believe in your mission and your values. They believe they're going to get paid. And we all want to get paid, right? We all want to be challenged, we all want interesting work, and we all want an opportunity to further our careers. That is a shared, a shared set of values. Likewise, we will decide to stay at an employer. Every generation has these same commonalities. Everybody wants to work for an employer where there's positive relationships and they feel challenged. They feel appreciated, respected, they're asked their opinion. And that the organization that they're working for is trustworthy and ethical. We all want that. We all want that idea and that feeling that we belong, wherever it is that we're working. But there are a few key areas, a few key tips where I want to share with you, where you can increase that feeling of belonging. And number one is relevance. For all groups of workers, the work you do must be relevant. And this matters for someone who's 60 as much as it does someone who's in their twenties. Although the meaning of relevant might be different for each of those age groups. So, as leaders, you must always communicate a task relevance. And if the task is relevant, it makes the brand relevant, it makes the work relevant, it makes everything that your company does relevant. Now, with that being said, younger generations really like a lot of communication. They want to know every reason why every single task is important and why it's relevant to the overall well-being of the company. So, very important. The second thing is accountability. Now, some people are accountable by nature, right? They're performers and, but a lot of people have to actually be made accountable. And a lot has been written about the lack of accountability in Generation Y. But I think it's really more of a question of communication. So, leaders have to be very clear about what it means to be accountable in today's workplace. So, a 45-year-old may see his work as contributing to the bottom line, whereas a 25-year-old may see a task, see just a single task, and they're going to miss the whole big picture of why that task is important. So, as a leader, you need to show everyone why everything they do in the workplace counts and helps build a good brand, build a good company, and then show them why it's their responsibility and how to hold them accountable for that particular task and that job, you know? I love this comic, sure glad the hole isn't at our end, not realizing that the whole boat is going to sink sooner or later, you know? All ships rise with the tide. So, hold everybody accountable and explain why tasks are important. The third thing is motivation. And, you know, motivation can sometimes be a mystery for someone who's leading. A conventional boss, you know, when you think about 10 or 20 years ago, would see a paycheck as sufficient motivation. But a strategic leader is going to see motivation as the key to a productive workplace. So, taking the time to understand what motivates workers in your whole team, not just one set of workers, but everybody, it's a huge investment, obviously, of your time. But it's absolutely necessary, because we have so many different generations with so many different expectations and so many different skillsets. Remember that unmotivated workers aren't going to care about your company and they're not going to stick around. And they end up being an expense, because they turn over frequently. So, that's the first step towards, you know, destruction and decline. We really have to make sure everyone feels motivated. And here's another great comic related to motivation. I don't know why he won't sit or roll over. I gave him this great sweater. Obviously, the sweater isn't what's motivating the dog. The dog wants treats. So, it's important to understand what motivates your employees. The fourth thing is trust. And as the work world becomes increasingly driven by social media, social technology, trust becomes more important. You know, think about, Generation Y has kind of been raised in this era of social media, this peer-driven conversations. And that means we've moved towards an era of very authentic, credible communication. We've really moved away from very formalized corporate speak and being very careful about what we say and what we do and PR and all of that. So, you know, old-school companies or leaders may think, again, trust is embodied in the paycheck, but it's really not. Trust, trust today especially, is earned. It's like respect. And the workers who trust your management will trust your company, will trust your brand, will continue to stick by your side. And, you know, just keep that in mind, that trust is so very important. The office is more than a place that employees go to to earn a paycheck. Those relationships between employees and employers are essential in creating an efficient and successful business. And that's especially important with younger generations. Here's a, something called the Jacobs Model. It's outlined in this infographic by Unum, which is a financial protection insurer. But it just looks at the eight drivers of trust. So, you know, belonging and connection, voice, having your voice heard, working for a fair organization, being challenged and being able to learn, knowing your role, feeling valued, having a sense of purpose, being given choices, feeling secure in your role and in the company. So, trust, trust plays a very important role. And fifth is emotional intelligence. So, you know, we've kind of moved away from just having IQ, being smart about your job and how to do your job. We're now moving into emotional intelligence, because again, we're very multi-generational. We have multiple needs, multiple skills. So, you need to kind of have this emotional connection with everyone in the workplace. You have to have that empathy for them, that interest in what makes them tick and what motivates them. And that's not to say you have to be best friends with them, but you do have to be sensitive and aware to the emotional tenor of the workplace. You know, and again, kind of ignoring that, we start to see that people don't have those collaborative relationships. They don't have any relationship. So, then they don't stay tied to an organization. If we look at emotional intelligence, which is on the left, that's being very motivational with your employees, reflective, self-aware of what's going on, thinking about things in terms of relationship management and dynamics that are going on in the organization, in comparison to kind of just knowing how to do the job, that's that technical knowledge and, you know, again, kind of processes and strategies and traditions and critical thinking. And yes, that intelligence is so important for a leader to have, that IQ. But that EQ is really emerging as a very important leadership trait. You know, if you look at the difference, you know, Mark Zuckerberg, the founder of Facebook, is very, he knows everything about programming, but he, his social skills aren't that great. You look at Richard Branson and he has very high EQ. He's able to motivate anybody he comes into contact with. So, things to think about. And that leads me to collaboration. So, I asked, you know, "How much time does your company spend on team building and thinking about team development and collaboration?" And there's, you know, percentage of you, about 30%, are, you know, very rarely or never really focused on that. Right now, we have to think about collaboration and teamwork. You know, top experts confirm, you know, there's been numerous research done on this. The companies with the healthiest bottom line know that diverse workforces are more effective, efficient, and profitable than other workforces, because there's a broader spectrum of knowledge and experience and people working together to solve problems. And the same is true for multi-generational teams. By bringing together workers from a variety of age groups, you can harness, for example, the energy and adaptability of Generation Y, while also benefiting from dependability and experience of Baby Boomers. So, it's very important that we take steps to leverage knowledge across the age groups, start programs that will encourage cooperation across generations. For example, a mentoring program that pairs older workers with younger workers and vice versa. You know, thinking about how we're setting goals together. If you establish team-building goals, you know, these are objectives that benefit both the organization and individual team members. For example, the goal of perhaps office workers may be to complete tasks more quickly and accurately in order to leave on time each day and thereby save the company some money. But also, it's encouraging people to share their skills and information with one another. Anytime we're withholding important information and we're not sharing knowledge, that's really jeopardizing the future of your company. It's also taking time to reward the entire team as well as individuals. And that can be something very, very simple. I've seen companies take rocks and literally write, "You rock on it," and give it to them as a traveling trophy. It can be a free lunch, it can be employee of the week parking, or time off, or praise. But, you know, left to their own devices, workers from different age groups aren't likely to mingle. We all mingle with those that we're most comfortable with. We stay with our peer groups. So, that makes teamwork and collaboration something, you have to, you have to be intentional about it. And, you know, plan events that highlights generational difference while encouraging the group, you know, to work together, like a potluck dinner, a costume party. You know, think of ways to have fun. And also, look at your workplace through a generational lens. And I hope that I've provided some very high-level tips and insight into how to do that. But looking at, you know, it's not a one-size-fits-all workplace anymore. It's not the Boomer way or the highway, and it's certainly not the Gen Y way or the highway. It's how do we capitalize on all of these generations that are working together and see what they all bring, you know? Thinking about, well, Baby Boomers, the assets that they bring are that they're hardworking and confident. They want that detailed dialogue, yes. But they're very concerned about that, you know, they're concerned about their retirement and their future, and they dislike suggestions to do something new and taking that into consideration. Generation X, very self-reliant and family-focused. They want to be given a task and trusted they can see it through. They hate to be micromanaged. And they want very clear, concise communication. And they're very concerned right now. They are the most debt-ridden generation in history. And they've been stuck in mental management for quite some time. They hate distrust, they hate being overlooked. Generation Y, confident, digital thinkers. They're also a little bit needy, and we have to take that into consideration when we communicate and manage. They want that frequent feedback. And they want to do as much as possible via technology. They too have very high debt. You know, student loan has now surpassed credit card debt in our country. So, they want to be taken seriously. They're going to ask about everything, "What's in it for me?" That's how they're wired. And they really hate it when you just miss their ideas. So, again, taking all the needs of all of your workers into consideration. As we look towards the future, just a final thought, we really do have to think about the needs of the future workplace. We know that the future workplace is going to rely heavily on technology. So, it's getting really comfortable with using technology more and more, because that's not going away, that's merely accelerating. We know that the future workforce, as we've gone throughout history, you know, Boomers switched jobs maybe a few times throughout their career, Gen X a few more times, and now Gen Y even more frequently. We're becoming a very mobile workplace, one that's more comfortable with job hopping. So, we know we're going to have to really bring people in, make them very happy with their jobs. And that it's not just job, it's more than that, it means more than that. We know that we're going to have to use more communication all the time through more mediums and be very authentic about it. And we know that we're going to have to give our workers more and more opportunity, opportunities to learn, opportunities for team building, opportunities to lead, opportunities to make a difference in their, for their company or for their community or their industry. And it's important that we take these considerations of the future very seriously, because we know that by next year, according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, that Generation Y is going to be the largest percentage of the workforce, almost 40%. So, we're moving into that future a lot faster than perhaps you realize. So, right now, you might be thinking, "Okay, who'd hire a Gen Y? They're very needy, they're high maintenance." Well, just pretty much- Well, just remember, it wasn't that long ago that people said, "Okay, well, who'd hire a boomer?" And then, uh, it wasn't long after that that people said, "Well, who'd hire a Gen Xer?" You know, we've all been in that boat. Instead, rather than question and be negative about it, think about all the positive attributes that a multi-generational workforce provides for your company. And, uh, bridge those gaps. Find ways to focus on teamwork, collaboration, and working together. And you will find that your company will be more successful. You know, attracting and retaining talent takes a lot of work and persistent effort. But, um, get to it. And, uh, I would encourage you, as you go forward, think of three steps you can take in the next thirty days to bridge gaps and improve teamwork. Three steps. Be sure to write them down and then you will follow up. So ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your time. Are there any quick questions?
You can quickly enter a question in the chat area if you'd like, or try raising your hand and I'll try to catch you if you have any questions. Otherwise, as I mentioned, this is being recorded and that recording will be sent around via email here shortly after the session, I think certainly by tomorrow. Any last questions, comments? I want to thank everybody for participating again today. The next session will be held in June. You'll definitely be getting notice on that. I'm Lou Dickmeyer with PDP Solutions. And if you're interested in receiving a free copy of our book, Engage: Essays on Employee Engagement and Internal Communication, feel free to email us at info@pdpsolutions.com. Thanks, everyone, for attending. Thanks, Sarah.
Okay, thank you.